Revealing, loving, and still speaking God, who through the love and labor of many has helped build in this place a goodly heritage. And has crowned our city with honor and length of days. We give you thanks for past achievements and future hopes to be accomplished in our midst. But chiefly do we offer gratitude for your many gifts and the talents and the dedication of those who worked and those who volunteered to help make our city the place that it is today, while recognizing that we're different people from different places and backgrounds and have traveled different paths in life. Often it was not what they told us so much as who they were, a certain authenticity about them and the way they acted. So when we feel worn out or disappointed, remind us of them and that with your help and guidance, we can bring change and hope out of the most difficult situations. God, we also pray for Charlie Kirk's family and friends. We know in our heart of hearts that you cannot bear it when we kill and destroy one another. And we also have come to suspect how hard and underlinging we are toward each other. We ask you now to renew us according to Jesus's example. Lastly, eternal God, on this nine eleven day, fill our hearts with thankfulness for our military men and women and our veterans who answered the call to defend the honor and just causes of our great nation. We thank you for their patriotism, their devotion to liberty and justice, human dignity and rights, compassion, and self-giving. We thank you for their diversity and their unity and mission. To honor them, may each American find reasons to love, not hate, and strength to build rather than destroying, renewing our sense of unity, open faith through times of testing and difficulty. Continue now, Lord, to develop within us those qualities that enhance life as we come together in this historic Hopkins Hall with a spirit of love, goodwill, and mutual respect. May all who follow us maintain a zealous quest for learning, wisdom, cooperation, and love toward our neighbors, whichever which we earnestly pray will be a trademark of ours. In your holy name we pray, Creator, Redeemer, and Sustainer. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the God of all things, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, did I find any additions to the line of text?
There's two. One is a proclamation that came in from the Hispanic Chamber.
Right.
Um, I've got a copy of it. Did you have that one?
I did.
You have one in the Hispanic Chamber?
Yes.
Okay, and the other was from the TPO. The Transcription Amendment Resolution, Resolutions for Funding.
Oh, is this this? No, that's probably the one. Yeah. Can I have one? TPO?
Yes.
Okay.
I've actually done with the number off, but some papers he had offered him. We don't have to make any difference.
Okay, thanks so much.
I can tell what number will be added in that?
Um, we'll put that under the public. Or can we give the other resolutions and what have they?
Oh, okay, I see.
Present, please.
Eight H.
Eight H. And the, uh, let me stand.
Yeah, I'm looking for the copy with the number off. I have to do it by the time. I have someone with five papers. We'll get to it.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? That being said, um, public forum. If any point has, uh, like to speak on any given item that is not on our agenda? Do you think we got them? Okay. Which one are we using? Because I've got one that has a budget hearing first and public forum following, and then one that has public forum first and budget following.
We're doing the budget hearing first.
Budget hearing first?
Yes.
Okay, and we'll switch that around. Uh, public forum will be after the budget. And what number is that? Five, A, B, C, D. Five, A, B, C, and D.
The first one, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten.
Okay. Resolution twenty-five, twenty twenty-five ten, uh, which is the approval of the military.
Uh, Mayor, um, I'm going to have to read this resolution out by title, but it's in entirety because determined information has been disclosed. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten, uh, in its entirety, prefer to read. Resolution, the City Commission of City Lake Ellen, of Volusia County, adopting extended levy of backdoor taxes for Volusia County for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, um, twenty twenty-six, providing for effect. Whereas pursuant to law, on August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, Volusia County, may only notice of proposed property taxes to each taxpayer listed in the current year's assessment roll. And whereas, he said notice of proposed property taxes advise the recipients of a public hearing to be conducted by the City Commission on this date of consideration of suggested tenant and general municipal legislation and the proposed military necessary to propose that budget. Whereas the public hearing has been held as specified in the notice of proposed property taxes and in accordance with statute two hundred point oh six five. Whereas the gross taxable value of property purposes not exempted taxation within Volusia County has been certified by Volusia County, to the City Lake Ellen, as two hundred fifteen million eight hundred forty-three thousand seven hundred forty-nine dollars. Now therefore, we resolve this, City Commission of City Lake Ellen, for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, operating military is seven point two one nine mils, which is greater than the rollback rate by six point seven oh two four mils by seven point seven one percent. The final public hearing will release September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five at six P M. And the resolution shall take effect immediately upon its, uh, adoption. Upon its adoption, a public hearing on the eleventh day of September, uh, twenty twenty-five, at seven P M.
Okay. Discussion.
Make a motion, we, uh, accept the Resolution twenty five, twenty twenty-five dash ten.
Second.
Who opposed it in second? Uh, of, of time?
Mayor, do you not have a script in front of you?
Uh.
We need to follow that.
Okay. That's what we're missing.
Do you hear what they say?
Okay.
Seven point seven.
Thank you. All right, minutes of budget. This is for a public hearing on the city budget, City of Lake Ellen fiscal budget, fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, property taxes, um, tax rate and budget. The taxing authority is the City of Lake Ellen. The rollback rate is six point seven zero two four mils. The percentage of change over the rollback rate is seven point seven one. The military rate to be levied is seven point two one nine mils. Public hearing and the military rate is open. Recognize any citizens that would like to speak. None?
I, I got a card in there.
Excuse me?
I have a card in there for five, Katie.
You guys are, uh, I mean.
I would like to speak.
What? Okay.
You ready?
Yes, sir.
Ron Perry, four fifty-one West Michigan Avenue, Lake Ellen. Uh, I just got a quick question as a thread. It sounds to me that the rate is seven point one percent above the rollback?
Seven.
It was seven one percent.
Say what? Seven point seven one percent.
Is above the rollback rate? It's, and that'd be like thirteen percent? Thirteen? It should be like. If the rate, if rollback rate is six, if we're going to seven.
It's seven point three.
It's not seven.
Seven point two, and they're at six point seven oh two four. It's the rollback rate. I didn't calculate it, so.
Sounds like we're going with thirteen. But, um, you know, look, looking at our budget and look at the finances, I think the commission should, before they adopt this, look into taking the least out of the budget, put it in the non-addition form, like the fire protections. It is under public safety. I think legally, if you look at it, it can be done. That way, every, every homeowner.
Check it down.
Fire, fire damage with public safety can.
Police can, like, fire can, but E V, P M S can't. So we, even within our fire, we don't pay for all of county's fire services because the P M S can't. But the courts clearly ruled that police cannot be funded by assessment.
Okay, thank you.
People have looked into it, good drive.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Zach, are you good on the percentage?
Yes, rollback rate, he says, the six point seven oh two four.
Right.
Uh, so the seven point two one nine is about half mil, um, so the seven point seven one is seven.
That's correct.
Six point seven, yes.
Yeah, I'm just trying to confirm what.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Public hearings are now closed. City Attorney will read Resolution twenty twenty-five.
You got it.
I'm sorry.
You're all right, I've already read it.
Oh, okay. We have a motion.
I sense something could be planned. Um, with looking at the resolution, obviously, I think.
Yeah, here you can.
Can't hear you.
Sorry. With looking at the resolution and the seven point two one nine of, uh, military rate. If we're gonna sign the resolution tonight, we're gonna make the final decision on the twenty year.
That's right. This, this is the tentative military rate and this is the tentative budget. Um, I'm not gonna say it's impossible to go above this military rate, it's very, very hard. But you can lower the military rate below what you said is ten. Eventually.
So, well, I guess I've been looking at some areas that seem to cause, um, military to go up after the curve of people who are not paying their military rates or into basically non-addition forms. And if they're not paying the non-addition forms, they're getting garbage pickup free and they're getting safety free because that's all adding to the tax. Is there a way to, that, to me, if there is a way to cause our tax rate to go up for the people so far?
I mean, maybe, maybe Zach or, or, my thought is, I'm thinking about it, you have a budget, you budget to spend so much money, you have some hard offers. You have an assessed valuation, so the military rate is just a, um, calculation of, you gotta generate this much money based on this assessed valuation, the military comes up. Um, if people don't pay what you project as revenue to come in, I don't know so much that that impacts the military rate as it may create a deficit and shortfall of revenue as we go through the year and may require adjustments to the budget to reduce expenditures or to take money out of the reserves to plug that hole. I don't know that it actually impacts the military rate. I could be wrong, I'm just thinking in my head, I'm not really sure how it would impact.
No, I think you're saying right. I really mean, is it going to impact property taxes for stuff? However, on the overall taxes paid in the city, looking on addition forms, and people getting free garbage pickup, you know, free safety.
Well, that's safety. Safety's not, not funded by non-addition. So your police.
Public safety.
Public safety is police, and now you're only fire, you've got to break them out. Police is funded through addition. Fire, uh, garbage, and stormwater are funded through non-addition assessment.
I think you hit on something when you said that, but it's probably not going to cause the military rate to go up, but somewhere during the year because we're not gaining the revenue.
We only budget for ninety-five percent. We don't budget at a hundred percent for revenue because there's always a certain number of people that don't pay the taxes. Eventually, we get the money, but that's one thing you don't get away with in the United States, you're not paying the taxes. Your home will be taken, sold, so we'll get our money, but, but, but that five percent doesn't affect you another way.
Yeah, I, I'm not talking, we're really not talking about affecting the military rate, talking about taxes as a whole and the revenue coming from the city. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and we don't budget for a hundred percent, so we're only factoring not to get a hundred percent of revenue.
So if we, this is probably a legal question. If counties are going on property that is in arrears or has not paid for three years.
Different statutory process of what happens when somebody doesn't pay their property taxes. Um, and maybe sometimes in, um, people, or they, they will sell or call tax warrants, where people, in essence, the public has the opportunity to pay the taxes for somebody, and they get back what's called a tax warrant. And when you bid on, then you bid as interest. So it starts at a high interest rate, and people bid down. And so you bid ten percent interest, so you're gonna get, you, you pay off the taxes, but you are gonna get ten percent return on that. And if, if they don't pay, and then it goes into the next year, usually that same person will go forward and then again, and they may have bid a really low interest rate eventually did. But then, once you get two tax warrants on a piece of property, then you can get key to become the owner of the property. So that's how you lose the property. It's three? Three years, so, three years. Um, that, that's how that process works. So the, the people who don't pay their taxes, um, we, you know, when they're due on the state, you know, deliver through, end of November, through March, I think, to pay. Uh, then they'll go into delinquency and they collect it through the tax, or probably get that money sometimes in, um, June, July, something like that, and then the balance. Um, one thing that I would say that y'all might want to, when we've talked about trying to figure out how to address, um, and we ought to look at it and talk about it when we're doing our assessment. You know, there, if, if somebody loses in the city during the year, um, we, we, say they had a vacant piece of property, and it was under construction, and so, but it wasn't, we had to see it noted by January first, I'll say twenty twenty-five. But they moved in that property and occupied it, say, July first, twenty twenty-five. Well, they were taxed in vacant homes, not for the construction, right? They probably were not allowed to be in garbage, in a garbage, garbage assessment.
We're, we're getting that.
Oh, we are getting that.
Garbage, stormwater.
Oh, we've been, okay, you're right.
Pro rating based on.
That was one of the issues we had, and we talked about trying to set up a pro rating. So we get that too, so we're, we're, we're doing this. You're, you're collecting, and if somebody ultimately doesn't pay, they're gonna lose the property.
Well, as I understand it, could be wrong, but I had quite a long conversation, that the lease can be, um, put on the non-addition forms by the city if a property owner is not paying the non-addition.
If you, if you do it, if you collect your non-addition through the assessment method and you don't put it on the tax bill, then you, it, it is leaning to the tax bill. But if you don't use the, um, the property tax bill to collect the assessment, you can bill the assessment separately, and there's a process for leaving, but I don't think you gain anything because, because we choose to put it on the tax bill, it already becomes a.
So it's just incorporated into the.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, do you have a motion in a second? Yep, okay. Any more commission discussion? Clearing none? Um, zone one?
Yes.
Zone two?
Yes.
Zone three? Zone four?
No.
And I will get.
But just so we don't have that same situation we had last year, um, are we actually okay for some?
On four one.
Four one, okay. I don't wanna go through that.
So like, between now and.
We don't really have that yet.
Huh?
We just, you don't have that yet.
Remember last year, we had to redo the voter rate because.
Exactly, but when two people vote no, you're gonna have to do that.
Well, if two people vote no, it won't happen, it won't pass.
Exactly.
So, you know, that was something that happened last year, we voted pass, and it didn't pass, we gotta redo it. So now, two people vote no, then you don't have the money. So we gotta redo it.
Exactly. But what we just voted on is just the resolution to get us to the twenty fifth to sign the final.
What you just voted on was the tentative military, on the twenty-fifth, we'll have time.
How long is that one?
So if you go, I, I'll look it up for the next meeting, and I'll probably make sure I come in. Sorry, if you don't go along with it. But I think, I mean, just now, for sure. Um, but if we, we go above the rollback rate, you have to have two or three votes?
Zach.
It's a little higher than that.
Is it?
It's seven point zero zero four seven. Anything above that is requiring a street majority.
Okay.
So four votes. Um, if we only have three votes, the most three votes can approve if it's seven point zero zero four seven. Anything above that is four.
All right. So you'll get, you'll get it next week, right?
Four votes for the seven two one.
You'll get it next week, right?
Okay, so we're gonna, okay. Here we have a vote of four to one, votes are passed.
So the next resolution, you wanna read off the script?
Get rid of it. Um, resolution is now. City Attorney will read the resolution to twenty-five, is eleven, budget adoption by trial only.
Sure. Resolution number twenty twenty-five national eleven, by title only, our first reading, from the City Commission of City Lake Ellen, Volusia County, adopting a tentative budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, providing effective.
Okay, uh, is there a motion on the resolution to adopt as soon as there's any question?
Make a motion, that we had not for Resolution twenty twenty-five dash eleven.
Second.
Second? Is there a commission discussion?
Yes, I can't find it.
That's on the, that picture page, I guess.
I'm just. It's active on the budget part.
So.
The first one, the military, is the box protection.
Okay, that's, okay.
That's all.
You can?
Does Mary want to come to this computer?
She is.
All right. Just sit down here. We have a vote on the motion.
Okay, put it, can you?
That's script. Are there any public input on this motion? Will we have any vote or any? Any think from the public? Do we have any? Okay. Having none? Ask for a motion from the commission?
Already made.
Second? Call for a vote on the motion. Zone one?
Yes.
Second?
Yes.
Zone two?
Yes.
Zone three?
Based on what I'm reading, I'm gonna say no.
Zone four?
No.
Zone five? Which is the mayor. I vote yes. So now would you translate that for us? We have a three to two vote.
Mayor, if you could go on the budget, the budget's not the, doesn't have the super majority.
Okay. Very good. Great. Yes, ma'am? Okay. Ready? Hello? All right, following this script, where we are now. Second reading of Resolution twenty-five, oh seven. Is that where we are?
Yes.
Okay. Second reading of the, uh, approval, the approving the fire rescue, storm, and solid waste, non-addition, as testaments.
Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh seven, uh, by title only, our first reading, a resolution of Lake Ellen four relating to the provisions of fire rescue, stormwater, and solid waste services in the city. Deposing fire rescue, stormwater, and solid waste, non-addition, assessments against such property located within the city, establishing the restrictive assessment rates for the fiscal year commencing October first, twenty twenty-five. Approving the non-addition assessment rules for such fiscal year and directing delivery thereof to the tax collector, providing for several billion, providing.
Okay.
Make a motion, we accept the resolution number twenty twenty-five dash seven.
Do a second. Motion moving in second. Do we have any comments? Discussion? Do you have any? None? Yes? Do the commission have any?
This one, we pretty much don't have a choice then.
I have a choice. Do we have a motion in a second?
Yes.
Public comments? Do we have none?
No.
Okay, all right. Zone one?
Yes.
Zone two?
Yes.
Zone three?
Yes.
Zone four?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Yes? All right. Always think we're moving around here.
It's just a document.
So there isn't a resolution?
It's not.
Okay. There isn't a Resolution twenty-four five dash twelve, so you don't approve this, just on a motion.
Okay, where are we? Okay, where are we now? The fee schedule, alright. Yep. I'm missing that bit.
There's not a, you should be on the second.
Scheduled to be updated under the water rates, based on your, um, consumption in meter, and it went up to two point seven percent for the CPI, so that's what you're approving is the automatic heat not increasing water.
No other each one?
Oh. I'm saying.
No, that counts, but no other thing. Um, so is it possible to make these?
Okay, thank you. Alright.
All our fees match, and we should count. I mean, we try to, just stay, you know, not out of the county reg, so. Some of these may be, need to go up, I mean, in terms of there, but I, I know Debbie kind of keeps an eye on, on what are at, and make sure that we're not outlawing.
Okay. I was just, um, thinking on the tree removal fee. The, um, tree inspection, which is paid for each of these, um, it's, it just looks a little bit low, um, based on, you know, treatment that I've had done, and knowing how, um, it's gone through the, tax, a couple of years, just to have training done, and what have you, so, um, I bet that was the only one that's kind of really questioning, especially because it says, you know, inspections, forty dollars minimum.
And on that one, we, we see there would be asked, plus any additional cost incurred by staff, and we have to get an arduous, that cost gets passed on to that forty dollars.
Okay, so this, this is all aligned, not bad, okay.
But we'll still, tomorrow's staff, you know, I'll bring that up, and make sure, across the board, if there's any adjustments, so we, because this could be brought back to a daily meeting, since there's a lot of orders, and so if there's some other updates, we can bring this back.
Okay, perfect.
Alright, what if, as one point effect, does this have on nuisance trees?
No.
Wouldn't have any statement to take down? Those streets, I think it just has to do with, um, native species, you know, oaks and logs.
I'm not, I'm not a proper, uh, uh, brick. So now I need your resolution?
No.
First reading?
No.
It's just a, it's supposed to be two resolutions.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve the city relating to the fee schedule.
Second.
Discussion? Any part?
No.
Yeah, okay. Uh, okay, first reading? Discussion?
It's not first reading, Dan?
Yeah.
It's a motion in a second.
It's a motion in a second.
Oh, we do a second. Motion in a second?
Yep.
Can you have that?
Alright, on the favor. Hi. Hi. Any votes? On the favor, okay.
It's under the, to feel this under the law.
Yeah, I mean, I, I cannot find one in the city that will allow it, I, I can't, I don't, I don't, maybe that's on twenty seven.
Alright. Good answer, the presentation's information. In the public forum, that's probably far, that was sort of skipped.
I live on Harlan Avenue, and if anyone who's driven down there, they would find there's big holes, particularly from the section of Summit, and next to, um, South Summit. And one of them is really bad, in that first section, and I'm just wondering if somebody can help it level out.
That's Harlan and where?
It's Harlan Avenue.
Harlan Avenue, near which street?
It comes off the.
Yeah, it comes off the Summit.
Summit, okay.
And it goes all the way down to Lakeview.
My first stretch is through the valley.
I'm sorry?
The first stretch is through the valley.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Raj Perry.
I withdraw. Withdraw.
Nancy Berry, Woodbury, Vice Delaware, uh, this year, with the, um, we call it all citywide sale, citywide yard sale. Here's my school eleven, and I'm here tonight to ask you all to wait, permit these, for the participants, as we have done every year before. Are there any, a motion that we waive the fees, as we've done, and ask for the little, the citywide yard sale, that may be period, anything that's struggled?
I need, no, I want to say, we need to make this perfectly clear, that this is not a city sponsored option, and that we would waive the fees for anybody that wanted to do some of them in the future.
So the motion in a second, we had a discussion, anyone else? Any one from the audience? Okay.
Can you amend your motion to include that?
Um, I, can we do that, or does that lie in the future?
Well, when it comes back for someone who does, there's another larger yard sale.
I just want to make it perfectly clear, this is.
We're trying to make it perfectly clear. Yeah, we've done that in the past, when they're doing citywide yard sales.
And I'm amenable to that as well.
Okay. Motion move in a second? Any discussion further? All the favor? I have. Any votes? So moved, thank you. Pass under public forum? Anyone else?
Is this still in the resolution?
Excuse me?
I was looking at the resolution, that was for, um, the proclamation, I mean?
Yes, we haven't got to that yet.
We haven't yet, did it? I'll take orders, I'll screw it up here. Not screw it up, but we're following it. We got an update, it's, you're into the.
Yeah. Okay. Now we have presentation. First presentation is the red ribbon, wheat proclamation. Had everything laid out, we have to make some changes. Proclamation for the red ribbon. Was, right. Whereas communities across America have been plagued by numerous problems associated with illicit drug use, and those traffic, and those that traffic them. Whereas it is hoped that in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction, coupled with hard work and determination of organizations such as the young Marines of the United States Marine Corps, lead to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. And whereas governments and community leaders note that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce and to use, to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities. And whereas the red ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Amiki Kiki Kamamira, as a drug enforcement administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty, and represents the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas the red ribbon campaign was established by Congress in nineteen eighty eight to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and re, and reduction efforts. And whereas on October twenty third to the thirty first, as being noted, is as a national red ribbon wheat, which encourages Americans to wear red ribbons to show their support for the drug-free environment. Therefore, Burton, Mayor of the City of Lake Ellen, is hereby proclaim, October two twenty third to the thirty first, as a red ribbon wheat, and the city of Lake Ellen, and urge all citizens to join in this special event. The next one is the proclamation. The city of Lake Ellen, proclamation September eleventh, twenty twenty five, recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month, September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated each year from the fifteenth of September through October the fifteenth, to, to honor the history, culture, and contribution of Hispanic Americans, whose roots trace from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central and South America. And whereas the observation of historic, of Hispanic, his, his heritage month began in nineteen sixty eight, as Hispanic Heritage Wheat, under President Lyndon V. Johnson, as expanded to a month-long celebration by President Ronald Reagan in nineteen eighty eight, recognizing the growing contributions of Hispanic Americans in our country. And whereas Hispanic Americans have played an integral role in shaping our nation's history, and continuing to make invaluable contributions in arts, education, business, science, government, and all aspects of civic and cultural life. And whereas the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, Commerce of Central Florida, is dedicated to advancing the growth and success of Hispanic-owned businesses, professions, and strengthening the economic development, culture, awareness, and civic engagement of our region. And whereas, hmm, my eyes right there. And whereas the city of Lake Ellen proudly recognizes the vibrant traditions, entrepreneurial spirit, and lasting achievements of Hispanic residents, families, businesses, that enrich the fabric of our community. And now therefore, I, Mayor, Burton Burton, the mayor of the city of Lake Ellen, in Florida, on behalf of this city commission, hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Lake Ellen, and encouraging all residents to join in celebrating historic culture and contributions of the Hispanic Americans. And I witness, therefore, I here to set my hand to cause the seal of the city of Lake Ellen to be fixed this eleventh day of September, twenty twenty five, near Burton, Burton, city of Lake Ellen. There will be a historic, um, Hispanic historic celebration this Saturday. Um, it will be at the, at Park. I will be reading this proclamation that is, at this particular, Hispanic, uh, observation. Anything else? Proclamation, set to done? Woodwind and corn, that is next, where are they?
No, no, it's, it's.
Oh, okay.
You hear us? Sure.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, and Staff, Scott Shannon, with Water Incurrence. So at, at, at our last meeting on August twenty first, Water Incurrence Staff presented the results of the stormwater master plan, which included recommendations for improvements, uh, the stormwater drainage improvements, uh, in different areas of the city. Um, the, the next step for, for that master plan is for us to submit that to floor Department of Environmental Protection, which begins the process of us seeking funding for you all to design and construct those improvements. So the, the, the action item for tonight, and indeed for the agenda item, in fact, is really just a formal approval of that plan, uh, from the commission. Uh, and normally, we do that at the same time we present those results, uh, but there was a, there was a, there's a, there's an advertising requirement for the, the public meeting part of that, where you could actually, um, provide that approval. So we were just shy of that at the last meeting, so we're back at this meeting, simply just to, to officially get your approval of that plan, for us to take that as the next step.
Thank you. Okay.
That was a pretty, like, nice, nice one's question.
Yeah, okay.
We were just, so we were restating this, so that you can make the, uh, the advertisement correct.
Perfect. It's, it's been advertised, and your, and your approval allows us to submit that to Department of Environmental Protection.
Is it called the stormwater master plan, or is it called the facility plan?
Yeah, the, the official submitted to the Department of Environmental Protection is a stormwater facility.
I make a motion, we approve the facility stormwater plan.
Second.
Any discussion?
Then you clarify this is what gets us to the next step to start acquiring the funding.
That's correct, this is one funding source that we are submitting to, there's others that we're working on, we might have to.
That's how I have to set the whole team, so far, it's.
Motion move in a second? Public input?
I do have, which, which plan are you, uh, voting on? There's, there was three options given to you, which option are you picking?
The recommendations in the plan were identified as alternative three in each of those cases.
They were all one plan, it's just, it's in every parts.
So you don't have to decide which plan to go after right now?
Well, the, again, the, the recommendations were for the drainage improvements identified in one particular alternative, which were just, if, if the alternatives were just different means of conveying stormwater from the areas where they tend to stay to, to, to facilitate drainage.
All the favor?
I.
Hi. Any votes? So moved, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, the motion. This is for the Ace of Gray Park Agreement, would you take that for us, for?
You ready?
Okay, thank you. We'd like to, uh, give a brief background on the Lake Ellen Garden, in case you're not aware, of some of the, uh, high points, so I found, uh, a short article in, sure, I was. You can find these at the Lake Ellen Museum, by the way, in full, Lake Ellen Museum. I thought Dorothy Schneider's, uh, article here would be, over here. The Lake Ellen Garden was organized in nineteen thirty six. Dinners, flower shows, silver keys, and entertainments for student partners of local scene. Under the direction of Mrs. Blanche Jordan, who was president of the club for many years, a group of dedicated women and men, and there wasn't ends of period, well, undertook the planting of flowers, and shrubs, sprigging grass in Lake Park, and at Hopkins. Hall in nineteen forty-one. They were able to raise enough money to buy the site of the former Grantville Hotel at the corner of Main Street and Upright Avenue from the Jacobs Lumber Company of the land. The building, which had been used by Miss Harriet Starkweather as a residence after the demise of the hotel, had been tore down. What the garden club bought was an overgrown lot that had to be cleared and replanted. The park is still maintained by the gardeners and is a popular spot for weddings. That's the basis of what Dorothy wrote. I'd also like to add, I was made a member of the Lake Helen Garden Club when my mother was pregnant with me. So I was the first male member of the Lake Helen Garden Club. So roots go back deep there, and then first time I ran away from home, we lived next door, I ran into the garden club. Sidney Taylor, the attorney in the land, they've been named Sidney Fielder and Taylor Fielder, and the land. He and his wife did the first documents of incorporation for us. And his son, Richard Taylor, continues that tradition. He's the one that we've been meeting with, our boards met with him, and we've had even in the Christmas party, to try to find ways to move ahead with this agreement between the city and the Lake Helen Garden Club. We looked at many agreements. Some of them were from the state of Florida. Richard is one of the two hundred special magistrates in the state of Florida when it comes to real estate, so he was going way back, a hundred years, state of Florida. We looked at the agreement between the City of Deland and the West Lucia Historic Society. We looked at the agreement with Lake Park and even the West Lucia Saddle Club. Now, present benefits to the city. The park is in the Lake Helen Historic District. And the city is getting credit for the two and a half acres for conservation area in our present comp plan, getting it right now. Moving along, the club has approved a replacement for the pavilion that the tree pill on destroyed. Buddy's still, Buddy was here. Okay, well, Buddy is going to help us with that. We're going to replace the old pavilion. We decided to move ahead with that. And another thing, maybe one of the most important things, Mark Shuttler had the idea of putting a sign on the right of way as you move down Main Street to the first four-way stop, a sign there that would be a directional sign as you enter into the City of Lake Helen. Things like Historic District or whatever, but anyways, a directional sign, but it's not just a plain or modern sign, it's one that we found that is indicative of that era of historic park. Now, the club will continue to maintain this park. The club will continue to maintain that park as we've always done. That's our intention as long as we have a club. And we'll support programs and encourage people of all ages, backgrounds, and abilities to explore this wonderful park by turning it into a living classroom and making Asia Gray Park welcoming everyone and available to all. Footnote, Asia Gray was the famous botanist, and that's why they chose his name. Buried just a bit. One time I walked over there and there was a young man there, white and everything, and I finally approached him. He went to the park because he had just lost his mother. Another time you walk over there and find somebody proposing to be married. It's a wedding, but this park is important. We mainly just want to see this park protected. We do not want to see it ever sold and have two houses kind of thing. And, you know, if the members decided, so I'm raising another to sell it right now, very good, we just don't want that. That's the main purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burton, for doing that part. It is an addition to our city. Scott, do we need to make any of this contact?
Um, yeah, so I think the first question is, do y'all want to accept?
Okay.
There's offering to dedicate the park to the city. So your question is, you know, for y'all is, do you want to accept it first to be a public park? You know, it would be added to the city's insurance. I don't know if it's on the tax, if it's not, if it was added to, you know, the beginning of the city became an owner. So you guys decide if you want to accept the dedication of the park first. So if you say yes to that, then the question is, how best to do that? I think to protect part of their interest, and I read the document, they've offered to propose the deed where does two things. One which I agree with is you can have it called a revert order, like within the deed. It happens a lot with those who are going to say, we're going to give you this property, but it has to be used for this purpose. If you don't use it for this purpose, it reverts back to the Grantville. We probably ought to say it will shall be used only for a public park or something to that effect. And if it doesn't for a public park, then it gets reverted back to the Grantville. The other thing that they've asked for in here, which I'm not really keen on, is they said that we retain a license agreement to use the park. Now, a license is a right to enter land for a particular purpose. They don't identify a particular purpose. They just want the right to continue to enter the property. I'm not 100% sure you can retain a license agreement, but we could obviously grant them a license agreement, or we could give them an agreement to manage the park instead they want, they're going to continue to maintain the park. Well, that's not in the document they proposed. So I think if you want to go along with what Louis has said, if you want to access the property dedication, I would do a deed with a revert if it's not used for a public park, so it can only use it for a public park. And then we get into a separate agreement with them, a lease to manage the park. What are you going to do with the property? You know, because when it says they have a license to go onto the property for any purpose whatsoever. I think we need to break them up into two agreements. I don't know that a license is the best way to do it, but maybe that is, but we ought to specify, what are you going to want the property to do as opposed to just a blanket? You can go anything, whatever reason you want. But first of all, you have to decide, do you all want to accept the park as a dedication to have, it becomes another city park, another thing we have to add to our insurance.
Could Mayor, to ask Louis, Louis, when you were giving your presentation, you said that the club would still maintain the park, but the agreement says that the city would maintain the park and the insurance, so.
We are going to maintain it. As far as the insurance, my understanding was way back, we'd be under the city's Florida legal city's insurance umbrella, which would save us a lot of money every year because it's a big expense.
Yeah, I'm not questioning that, it's just the agreement says that the city would be responsible for maintenance and insurance. So if you're doing the maintenance, then this would actually be the right.
Mr. Mayor, I should. I think, as you said, that would be something that, I think that should be something that should be worked out in the license, but what we had discussed as park members, that we can do routine maintenance, like the mowing and things like that, and we can keep that up. But it's become very hard for us financially if there's like major, like a tree that needs to come down and things like that, and we would appreciate the city's help with that.
Yeah, they took down the trees last time, they were visioned charges, so we'd be able to gift cards. It would be very fortunate, I'm not, I'm not real sure, but that is. Obviously up here.
Is there any way, Mr.? Is there any way Mr. Taylor would be able to come here and explain this to us?
That you're journeying?
Yeah.
Our main goal in the garden club is to protect our property, oh, sorry, our main priority tickets under these separate terms, for the Lake Helen Garden Club on the eighty-sixth North Lakeview Drive in Lake Helen. And I've been a member of the club for around ten years. And our goal is exactly what the garden club set forth when the property was purchased, to keep it as a tranquil park, they really don't have a land to look. It's a very small area, it's relatively safe, it's not so that people can get lost in it, but it's still large enough that you can sit and meditate and really enjoy the park. When you come into Lake Helen, it's part of the gateway, and back and back you come by the woods and the woods, it's a little patch of property, the intersection of all the churches. Lake Helen residents and citizens already use the park a lot, because basically they have dogs there, they sit and meditate, people sit and have a sandwich there. It's open to the public, but it's.
The home thing is the city.
Oh, yeah. It's already being maintained as a park for the citizens, but it's not a city park much, it's basically being maintained by private people. And our goal is, we would like the city to have the park and have all of the citizens have that ability to enjoy the park. And it's a lovely park, I don't know if everybody takes the time to go there, but it's very meditative. There's not a lot of open space that has trees and flowers and things left in Lake Helen, that's just a little patch of land that we wanted to name, that little patch of land right there. And so our goal more is to make sure that it remains that tranquil park and that possibly the city will recognize it as a wonderful place for citizens to enjoy and not have longer responsibility for a private garden park. That's really our goal. And if it has to be written some other way, you know, how, what we have to do versus what the city has to do, we're really very open to that.
I haven't communicated with Mayor Terman yet, because I wasn't sure that you want, you know, whether y'all want to accept, we have to decide if you want to accept it first. If you want to, then I can be able to contact their current, give you my suggestions. And I'm pretty sure we could probably work out something. So if you're willing to accept it, you know, then you're going to put it under the city's insurance, and we would come up with, I think a revert order would completely protect it, that it's not used for a public park. I think same that would protect it there. And we just need to specify, what is it they're going to do, what balance of it will be decided on. But I just haven't communicated with Mayor, until I get the question.
I think we, what we're, it's heard that if we make the decision that we want to accept it, then the negotiation of the small stuff can be worked out between Mr. Taylor and our attorney.
The end's butted towards the moors and the pores.
All that, all that is.
This came up a few years back, I forget exactly when, sometime just before COVID or just after COVID. And.
Way over before COVID.
And they were, the club was just looking for insurance coverage at the time, and it wasn't felt like it would benefit the city that much doing that. This actually works better on the city's part.
I think the discussion back then was, just, we were trying to come up with a agreement where we would insure it, so why don't you just give it to the city with a revert, it makes it easier. That's what they're proposing right now. But what can be, what kind of.
Is the license that falls on their want to maintain?
We just need to clarify that, I don't think the license, we can work that out.
It's been a long journey.
Yes, it has.
We appreciate that, we appreciate that. I also say that therefore, the grant, if you accept it as a ten dollars.
Okay, I'll pay the ten dollars.
You pay the ten dollars. So the motion to kneel is acceptance of this part.
And you accept it subject to final writing of the.
Well, it's up to you. I would say if you want us to bring back the document through your final blessings, which I would recommend, to bring it back to you to say, you motion to approve the acceptance of the parks and directing staff to negotiate final documents to be brought back to final proof.
That, that.
Motion to that, second? And that? Second, all the favor? Public discussion? Input? None? All the favor?
Aye.
No pose? No pose? Nope? Okay, let it pose until we see the final documents. Okay? So pass on that motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Consent agenda, is there anyone on the commission that would have a point of reference or discussion for the consent agenda? Anything in the agenda that needs to be approved or adjusted? No? In other words, this is a consent agenda, so is anything in that fought in the minutes that are already first?
Anything in the minutes?
So is there any motion?
I'm making a motion, make stuff in minutes, have freedom.
Second, all the favor?
Aye.
It's a bit too important.
Because. Lake Helen eight E.
Eight?
Is the RFP.
What about the RFP?
Yeah, that's actually.
Yeah.
Okay, resolution for the RFP for the city auditor. Where is that?
I think what's shared in this is, is, um, I don't think the state law says that your military budget has to be the first substantive issue.
That's where we go.
And I, and then initially, those things were after the consent agenda and after public participation, I directed staff to propose about those, for those, so there's no question on what it is or is not substantive, they don't really define it. So that's why your agenda got kind of out of.
Out of what?
So what version are we providing for the public?
Yeah, what I pull up online is the one that's. I don't believe it's substantive, we changed it, this reorganized.
Okay.
I just got a question on the RFP, what were you supposed to do with this one? We all have.
Zach is doing it.
Zach is.
Zach is it? Zach.
But he's not representing all the other ones.
He's representing the RFP, we're not going to represent the companies. We're representing.
Okay. The list? The one we just got?
Well, that's the form, but then in the packet, there's a list of what their bids are.
How do you get that?
Yeah, it's in there somewhere, it's a single page.
There's hope, I mean, there's hope for them, but it's not there. Because I thought we asked for us, if you wanted to have it printed out, and I've asked. That was it? Okay, eight words?
In the old one, it's eight E.
Eight E?
Yes. I have the old one.
The new one is.
Eight E?
Nine A.
Okay, nine A.
Yeah, the new one here is nine A.
All right, RFP. Okay. Discussion on this.
The slide goes there. That's a bad thing for you, having to line up the course of everything.
All right.
Before discussion, what you let that?
Before, before discussion, what you let Zach give a presentation on the RFP process and how you like.
Your own.
All right, so following the fiscal year twenty-four audit, it's got a quick background, the engagement letter contract here in place with McDermott Davis, the current auditor X five, I'd say statute at the end of that, with no further renewals, have to go out for an RFP process. That RFP, I believe, was approved that the July, it should be subsequently released. Following that, the D date was two weeks ago. There were five proposals received, those that I made were emailed out by Roxanne. And the agenda, I think, is just a quick summary of all, all proposals. This is one, the audit process, there is a state statute governing that, so staff cannot be a part of the selection committee. City commission has a committee, this decision, and basically the evaluation process rests with you all ultimately. Price, as far as locals, price cannot be the predominant factor. So it's certainly a consideration, as you'll see in the, the RFP, and there was, there were twenty points or twenty percent allocated to price. In that summary calculation, price figures were included, of course, is a consideration. Again, it's, it's not just a little bit situation, it is one where everything is to be taken into account, such as what is the experience of different audit firms, as well as just kind of looking at the overall approach and how everything is presented in the RFP. The score sheet that went along with that and passed out, basically allowed for everyone to rate each of the firms in those different categories. We got up to fifty points in leave and experience, thirty points in audit approach, and twenty points in pricing. So what the process effectively would come down to is the points served as a mechanism to score, and it really becomes more of the, the overall ranking of the firms, so that if everyone, you know, your, your, your interpretation of the points is different, that one person does not skew based on how you differentiate from a point perspective. So generally, what we've seen this process, and if everyone had a chance to be able to share any thoughts regarding any of the firms that you all have, that you can kind of consider in terms of reading through those five different proposals, just in case you have that, if they influence anyone else's scoring, as you go through and come up with your final scores for each of the firms. Once everyone completes that score sheet, really just the, the scores for each firm, there is a line there for total, and then the ranking. I have a spreadsheet to pretty quickly compile all of that to come up with the final ranking. So that would generally be, you know, what I would suggest in terms of the process. You know, staff, of course, any questions can be answered and helped clarify. With regard to the firms, I think all, all firms were noticed at the meeting, I think we had only one in attendance. So if there are any questions for the firms, that would certainly be bear game as well. Once the dish, once the scoring is done, you all have a chance to effectively make the selection of your target firm, basically take that into consideration. You could say, let's ask for a formal presentation or otherwise, it really is up to you all in terms of whether you're comfortable just looking at your proposals or in particular, through any additional steps.
Any comments or questions?
I just have one concern, I'm being a pain in the butt, I know. Um, this was not advertised for public, bid openings to the public, is that a problem? Scott?
No, the way the, the state law sets it up is at means, not, not like a typical contract, where you say, we're going to be bid open at two o'clock or something like that. This is, you know, a construction contract, these are rankings and approvals at public meetings by you. So, and then we're advertised.
No, I'm talking about the bid opening was not.
The, the, the bid opening, yeah, that, that doesn't, no, that, that doesn't have to be a public opening, it's the evaluation here today.
Okay, so all I need is an answer.
The evaluation of this tonight is where we're
Yeah, you're, you're serving as the committee and, and the commission to approve.
You need the answer tonight, or is that at the next meeting?
So I think whatever they went after was to go through the evaluation scoring process tonight, any discussion on that?
I haven't seen it.
Without having their packages with us in the
I didn't email them all.
You emailed them too?
Yeah, but without being here to, cause all my notes are at the house, the computer.
No, I didn't get that, and you should have asked us to provide the packets, cause I mean, we didn't hear anything back, and assume you all got it.
I, I did ask.
I did bring one set, just
Right.
For her, but I didn't bring them all.
Uh, as it was presented, it
I, I didn't bring them, but I did make one association off of what was online.
Okay. Um, it was asked that to print it out, if you wanted it to be printed out, I just made the request. Okay, but I didn't get it, because we could have, rather than my email?
Package.
Okay, we may have one, thank you.
Well, that's all of this, there are four different.
There are four different ones, I haven't seen.
Five.
I have not seen these, and my package is ready to print out. So now we're going to make a decision on this tonight?
The only thing I would like to say
Do I have to make a decision on this tonight? No, okay, all right.
The intent was, so I need to know what, who, who got it and who didn't.
I didn't get it.
You all need to review.
Okay.
I got it in the email, I'm just
Right, and my email has been
Don't be here tonight.
My email has been compromised for some time now, and that
That was our attorney.
Did you hear my email about, uh, okay, thank you. All right.
If you all aren't ready, then, then, then we'll have to do the twenty-fifth.
How long would it take, I mean, is this any imposition to the report, the submission that's already been submitted to the email? Will that be any problem for them?
No, I think the intent is to have it before October first, when we do this from here.
Yeah, October.
At the end of the year, they got to audit it, so that's the goal.
So if we do this tomorrow, and submit your
No, because we have the vote.
I know, okay. This has to be at the public meeting, and it has to be before October first.
Yeah, well, we, if you have a meeting the twenty-fifth, this can be added to the
Oh, okay, is that all right? We can add this to the twenty-fifth meeting.
And then you all can get a paper copy of all the proposals.
Thank you.
Questions?
That, that is my question.
We actually have to do the grading, we have to grade or
I, you know, I would see the RFP one without, if we represented that this is the criteria we're going to evaluate it on, then we should use that criteria.
Yes. Again, what, what ultimately will matter is your final ranking. So in terms of whether you are, obviously, say, between five firms, a hundred and ninety-five, ninety-eight, by eighty, or a hundred and ninety-nine, ninety-eight, it will roll together based off the ranking, so every commissioner basically has an equal vote. But the points are there to have kind of framework in terms of how it's evaluated, how everyone
Oh, so you don't want just a, a pretty good
I think probably what you need to do, I'm sensing in your head you have a rating already, and you have like, one, two, three, four.
Exactly.
But this is going to require you to fill the numbers in and come back into those, so.
Okay, so
That makes sense.
Yep.
So we have a meeting on the twenty-fifth, and by that, by that meeting, we can make this decision, or submit, make this a number.
So I would recommend is everyone have preliminary scoring, so you independently do your own evaluation, come up with your own scoring. At the meeting on the twenty-fifth, you would have a chance to discuss and you have a bigger case and say, hey, I really liked firm X Y G for this reason. Because sometimes what happens, you know, from that discussion, somebody might say, oh, I realize that, let me change my score, and I actually like this firm now that I considered that. And then from there, we would take final scores, basically submit those, those final score sheets would be on the public record, and then we would compile those for these, the aggregate rankings.
Okay, does everybody agree with that?
So each company that we have listed here, they're on on the same RFP, you know.
I call them, I call them P D F.
Okay.
So they submitted the information here to get anybody else to deal with any information at additions, deletions, or anything like that. When they, when they bid came in, this is what came in with the bid. That was it.
So that's what we choose from, right?
Right.
And I do have copies of those, if that's
Okay. Does that understand? Okay. Um, so by the twenty-fifth, and then each of them will have on the twenty-fifth, and then they'll be able to be presented before October first, to be able to meet that, that deadline, is that what I'm understanding?
Do I have a decision on the
Decision on the twenty-fifth, and we make it, if we want to have another meeting after. Okay.
Well, that gives the C A enough time to meet whatever company is chosen, to get them up to date.
Yeah, cause the, I mean, we will item and place by October, but typically they don't start maybe until November, in terms of gathering the so there's a quick turnaround that we want to get started, because they want to lose that, so we want, we want to get our audit out as soon as possible.
I think we would have the, the contractor engaging, by the proper show up on the regular October agenda to officially so if the twenty-fifth we can slash in, the October meeting, or DVD, engage in other fashion, prove the contract.
So the twenty-fifth we can have the people with the email to
No, the twenty-fifth.
Not the twenty-fifth, that, once we make a decision, then they will be coming in that
Just make sure you bring this for the twenty-fifth.
Thank you. Okay. Move right along, Karen, Olivia. I don't believe we do, uh, event application. Is this the, uh, Jason's specialty pop-up event? There he is, okay. Yes, sir, are you?
Commissioners, good evening, I'm Jason Hurwitz, specialty pop-up events, and we are here to bring a fantastic midweek Wednesday community market to Lake Park from three P M. in the afternoon until seven P M. before the park closes, then this would be out there before seven thirty, setting up for kind of an after-school, fun, safe, clean community event for the families, after-school, gourmet foods, food trucks, if permitted, a few of them. A small community market that other cities do during the week, really brings out a lot of people, not in a particular way from the fantastic assembly market that I've been to many times. This is just something during the week, be it the family out at the house, and the weather's really nice. During the holiday time, we are asking for permission for nine dates, starting October fifteenth, continuing through the end of the year, to kind of create a test of some kind, to see if A, it's feasible, B, everyone's happy with the results and what's going on with the market. And if there's any issues, at that time, we can address those issues, or possibly end the market by the end of the year, if it was not feasible, but we'd love to continue the market throughout the year, possibly up through summer, if it does work and the community supports it. We are fully insured, the city would be listed, of course, there is no cost to the city, any permanent fees for the park, of course, covered. We clean up everything, garbage maintenance, there's not much garbage from an event like this, but we do bring garbage bags. We have photo papers and paper towels for the restrooms as well, we don't ask the city for anything, just to utilize the space. The open marketing we do usually is social media, and we would ask the city possibly to put on the event calendar, just to let the community know that we were there, local vendors, no big companies, all mom and pops, a lot of bakeries and a lot of handmade homemade foods, things like that, that I think the residents of Lake Helen would love. The community is fantastic, it's a wonderful location, but we have to stop doing a little bit. So after everyone comes home, I'm thinking, hey, what a great opportunity to have to come out in the afternoon to pick up some cheeses, breads, baked goods, stuff for the kids. No C V Ds, no guns, nothing illegal, it's very safe community market that we oversee and operate. So tonight, we're just asking for permission to approve that application, to at least give it a try for the next nine days, starting October fifteenth, from three P M. to seven P M. And, um, that's about it.
Have you done these events in any other cities?
Yes, ma'am, we work all over the state of Florida, so basically right now, we're coming from Melbourne, up through Port Orange, sometimes St. Augustus as well. We work in the city of Deverry, city of Port Ar, uh, city of Orange City, we do the Saturday farmers' market in Orange City. We do Deverry Farmers Market on Sundays, we do Stanford Market Friday nights. A lot of big events in Melbourne and the bigger parks as well. We are known for the larger events, but we also, during the week, Monday through Thursday, like to help a community by offering them something unique, nothing tremendous, nothing police control, the security utility, it might be fifteen, twenty vendors, locals that just have an opportunity to sell. So we oversee the market, we make sure it's not about them, it's about the city. We work for you and the city of, uh, that's what we do. So we want to represent the city as you're running it yourself, we'll be running for you. So the two answers actually, I see this quite a bit all over.
The only concern I've got is, we've got a boys and girls club that uses the park until, what, six or seven? And that would interfere with it, cause they have activities out in the park.
We would work with the footprint, because I'm not coming to you with a footprint that interferes with anything. So basically looking, I looked at the pavilion, I looked at the back area, I also looked at the front area where the market is, based on their ability to play, do whatever they do, we would work from that, and I would come out next week, week after, see where they're taking this place out, and keep the footprint very, very small, we are not here to interfere, we would make sure vendors can park a distance, and it would be safe for the kids as well. So I would address that coming in the next weeks before the market would start, just by seeing what they were doing out there.
Okay, so you'd be starting at four o'clock?
Three, uh, I, I change, I'll speed it three o'clock, just to get it, so it's not going into the dark, and the time change will happen shortly. So I think the amendment on the application would be just three to seven, instead of four to eight. Eight would be in the dark, you know, the vendors have lights, it would be out in the park till eight thirty, forty-five. I'd recommend them out in the park by seven thirty, seven forty-five, so the park can still officially close at eight o'clock.
As first here, mentioning that there's boys and girls club out there.
Yes.
Uh, I know that they pick up, the last kids, kids pick up around seven, so they can be there until seven, so um, your timeframe would not basically interfere with the footprint that they would be using?
None whatsoever, and I would make sure the footprints, I'm not coming to you with a, my choice of a footprint, I'm going to look at their footprint as we run up and see where we fit, and this is a small footprint, this is big as this building would hold the vendors that we have.
If we approve this, I would recommend that you go to the boys and girls club and speak to them
Yes, sir.
That way, cause they have different days in the week, that they do different things.
Without a doubt.
Then they might be a day that
It's not, I didn't know that, but that's easily done next week.
Okay.
And we can come up with something with boys and girls club as well, as a sponsorship, something where obviously no money involved, or something to advertise the boys and girls club, you know, opposite, stuff like that. So maybe we can have a synergy to create, and even though they're playing and doing their thing.
And you'd also have a captive audience, cause the kids are going to be there until seven, parents come to pick them up, so
A lot of baked goods, a lot of kid friendly, a lot of three D imaging, that kids like the little alligators and things that our vendors make. So this is all handmade homemade stuff, so the kids would be safe, they would not be able to buy anything that was not safe for the children, but everything there is going to be handmade homemade, safe anyway, as a, as a farmer's farm.
Would you be using any of the city's electricity?
No, we do not need anything from the city, including the maintenance of the bathrooms, garbage, restrooms. If someone threw something in the garbage, we have to less than ours, that's up to the city. But we, we basically maintain it, clean it up after we go, the vendors know. In a market like this, there's no, usually there's no drinks, there's no food, where they throw away things, so the garbage, garbage is very limited.
I have a question about the, um, on the consent application, it says a number of questions.
I have a question about the, um, on being sent to applications, it says a number of questions, one hundred dollars. Um, and then, um, I'm just kind of wondering.
I, I think that was under the marketing, uh, under the marketing budget or something for the city. I, I, I basically took post on social media, I put a hundred dollars on there, I wasn't asking for a hundred, I was asking for. Under marketing, under marketing, yes. Yeah, I wasn't asking for that hundred, I was actually just trying to replace someone's time to post it on the calendar and do that, but that's all we were looking for, if feasible. Just so the city knew we were.
Okay, I was reading that one, thank you for pointing.
The city does have to sponsor it, it's not a city-run event, so the liability is still on us, even though we're putting you as a certificate of insurance, um, and all the commissioners as well, so. Hope that answers that.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that, I do appreciate it.
You got it.
I was reading it in Mountain West, I was thinking, that doesn't sound like what you said. Thank you.
And just while we're, yeah, I have a question for a gentleman, um, on page three, you've, um, declared no on proposed retail sales, but if you could have food trucks and vendors, then we will need to have that amended, because you would be selling.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And the food trucks will be based on need and desire of the community.
Yeah, it's just, it's just checking, it's just checking a box, yes, and put your initial mark.
Something fine. If trucks don't work, they don't work, so they don't come back, but we're trying to bring some stuff that's not in the city currently to affect any of the businesses, so different stuff, we need trucks that are not currently here, being served for dinner in the city. For example, I would rent a pizza truck with Roma across the street. That's not what I'm saying.
So you have your own vendors?
Everything is our own vendors, we recruit, it will change on a weekly basis, based on their success and their desire, or from what we have heard from the other markets residents of this city coming to our other markets, hey, how come you don't come to us and do something unique like that as well with these particular vendors? So the vendors are kind of all over the place.
We used to have a food truck Wednesday night out, wasn't there?
Yes.
Wednesday night? Yeah, uh, we have a, uh, Wednesday night outs for food trucks. Uh, that was for regular occurrence.
Sure.
That would be on.
Well, building on that, just the accountability from the city, from the food trucks, they like to do thousands of dollars and they tend to not come back if they do, so we pick trucks that are newer and they like, they, they're okay with a couple hundred dollars and they serve people, they get their name out there, compared to the bigger trucks that demand five thousand people to be out here on a, on a Wednesday night, which usually doesn't happen.
We don't have that much.
We don't have that.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, the other thing is that the, uh, Boys and Girls Club have, uh, what's that, ice eating machine?
Kona. Kona ice.
The Kona ice is one of our vendors as well, they, if they have them already, that would be just a non-repeal from us, we wouldn't bring anything to compete with Kona. If she decides to be in the event, but she's not there weekly, that's up to her. If Boys and Girls wants to keep her on there, that's up to them.
Okay. Would you be willing to work out the details with the Boys and Girls Club and come back with a better plan at our next meeting?
Uh, that is going to be undertaken for the twenty fifth, we are out of town.
Well, not, well, the next monthly meeting.
Uh, October. Uh, you think it's difficult, we start at three in the morning, so it's, it's a very difficult time for us to come back. I would make that amendment and send an email over based on the Boys and Girls discussion that we had, uh, to Roxanne, to communicate with the commission, that everything we're saying, they agreed upon, um, and like I said, this is up for evaluation as we go along, one, first one, second, one, third, one. They're not going to have an issue with us because we're addressing this current that you're telling either there, we're going to make sure it works. And there is going to be no interference, so I would propose by the next meeting, Roxanne would have a proposal for us, a little clearer plan on the Boys and Girls, this is what they do, this is where they are, here's where we're going to be exactly, unless kids change their focus, but she would have that by the next meeting.
That, that, that's why I'm thinking that it would be on you to get to them as opposed to us.
Yeah, I would say, I'm going to them.
Okay.
I'm going to them, and I'm going to go out there and see what they're doing out there and listen to what they need and just go hop and see.
How, how soon could you do that? Can you, can you do it there, next week?
Next week?
Okay.
You know, Roxanne, Roxanne, email, assume whether it's Monday or Tuesday, I'll stop in at the Boys and Girls Club and I'm not soliciting, I'm just telling what we're doing and what we're looking for. I'm going to tell, market them and support them and possibly do donations for them, so, and help the kids, maybe buy those ice for them.
I'm, I'm going to board directly with the Boys and Girls Club, so I can tell you who you can contact. In that way, that would give you the short distance between the points.
Perfect.
Okay.
And you're just asking for a test of nine weeks?
I'm just asking for a test, so we all together say we love it. We love it, but it's not working, so by the end of nine weeks, it goes away. We tried, we gave it a good shot, the city did come out, it wasn't, but nine weeks gives it a fair shot, it's not one or two, because you just, people out of town and things happened with their lives, so we're asking for nine. And then if it works and everyone's happy with the results, move forward.
Do you have rain hits? Do you, does that mean?
No, rain hits, it is a hundred percent rain or shine, if the weather is that bad, yes, we will just cancel it.
Okay, and you don't get a number on the end?
No, because they're, they're, they're basically a fly per week.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I mean, it can come back, there, you all could approve it if you were inclined to, under the condition of the benefit analysis, you know, as long as there's a food order, who, who, Boys and Girls Club is going to come.
Okay.
Yes, we. City staff, city staff sign off on site plan, and the Boys and Girls Club, sign off on site plan.
If we need approval this evening, I will get by Monday or Tuesday, plus Friday, by Monday or Tuesday, I have the Boys and Girls information to you, if there's any issue, we agree to not continue the process in there, but there will be no issue, because we're so flexible on what we are willing to do to make it happen.
Okay. And I just want to make sure of kids, they say.
We're here to support you and the children, we're not doing anything, this is not our ego or what we want. The city needs it, the people want it, the community is telling us they want it, I'm here asking for permission to give it a shot and let us prove our worth and see how great it could be.
Uh, just as we was talking about the, the Wednesday, the kids and the parents addressed the, uh, food trucks they look forward to, on the one day of the week that they did it.
I think it would be great.
People would be replacing that.
And we kind of do a five dollar food truck frenzy that we do as well, where we force the food trucks to offer at least one or two items at five dollars, because as you know, the prices are through the roof, so for the children, they're not going to spend thirteen dollars on a burger, mom gets two sliders for five dollars, the kids are mad, and the budget is there, so we played with that as well, and it works very, very well.
Uh, commission?
I vote motion that we give a shot. If contingent on the mounting from the.
Sign off.
Yes, yes.
And the amendment?
The, the, she just mentioned.
Does that?
Yes, second.
Remove the second, uh, there? Oh, I'm sorry. Hook, can I add one to it?
Karen.
And there's maybe a watch out.
I totally agree with that. First off, you can hurt your own market. I, I don't know why you would want to do that, but you can hurt your own market. Second off, you try management, these Wednesdays were terrible, kids were everywhere. There's traffic, like, maybe, and the police are trying to clean up Lake Park with the traffic from after-school. Now you're forgetting Linda's safety that time. Who's going to, who's going to take control over this? He's saying he is. We, we work under guide rules, under guidelines on the Saturday market, he has one.
Have you talked to her?
I suppose we talk to you.
I know. And you guys, you guys spoke to this, because you were.
I don't really have to show up for a meeting.
You didn't show up that time. Is that, oh, okay, well, thank you, so that, that was why it's kind of got to. So.
This is not, in any chance.
Okay, okay, you already had to say.
I think on the Wednesday market, Drew, not his way, every Wednesday. I don't know where he's getting the local vendors from, they're at the other market. I think our city's too small for two markets.
Isn't Wednesday, isn't Wednesday early, we list them?
Yes, sir.
So the traffic wouldn't be a disaster.
And we had a hard enough time just with food trucks, iris of food trucks, and a hundred kids waiting for their parents to pick them up. And it's only going to be worse.
That's why we want to run a test on it, and we need.
But a test for me is not nine weeks, it's coming in the busiest time of the year, but our vendors have sat out there all summer waiting for this time of year when the tour has come in. And now he's just going to come in and take half of it? I just want you to think about that before you make a decision that you're going to take away from your own market.
Um, I don't see how we're taking away our own market from yours on Saturday, it's on Wednesday.
I don't think the city can take two markets. We actually have big, big goods.
What, um, I see on December third and the seventeenth, what would be the Christmas tree lighting?
That would be on a Tuesday night. But we have many things coming out, so it depends, everybody in the week.
Yeah.
Cooling the train.
Okay. Okay. That's the only thing I can see it in, fair, it would be the, um, train setup, because they have evening vendors that will are at the train setup.
If I, if I could just address a little comment real quick. A, A, the Saturday market has a unique style of vendor and a category that we are not in. Our category is a little more, it's a little different, a little more way of food, some food trucks that we are with total control. Who will take control of this market? Yes, it will be me, to control everything we're talking about. We're talking about fifteen vendors, possibly two or three food trucks to start. That impact is about twenty to thirty minutes to get them into the park, once they're in the park, they're not moving, it's not going to affect school traffic whatsoever. The style of this market during the week is not a flea market, it's not a market with clothing and all that stuff that's there on Saturday. Saturday has identification to what that is, this is different. This is for mom and dad and the kids to come out and just. We are there providing security and watching over those children as well, just like the other part we would do. And second, regarding a train or holiday events, we work with this in Orange City and in Deverie, there are a lot of events coming up, and we're scheduled till one thirty in the afternoon on a Saturday, and there's two or three dates we have to close at twelve, because the city has a parade going on. And the answer we sent to that is, of course, we're going to close at twelve, we're going to open an hour early that day, because the city has to close down Tuesday, so the police have to do what they have to do with the Deverie kids. So in any holiday event, first of all, bring more people and more vendors to any holiday event, whether it's a Christmas tree lighting or a train event or holiday event, would be good for everybody. The more people to Deverie, we're not looking to take away from anybody, but after this nine-week test, we're going to know after three weeks, honestly, if this is feasible or not. But we want positivity coming from this market, not negativity. People that go to the Saturday market are going to continue to go to the Saturday market. People that don't go to the Saturday market, maybe will come out to the Wednesday market. We know this is not a battle, ten thousand people hanging around looking for a market. We need two, three hundred people on Wednesday night to be successful. The market on Saturday needs way more, and it's been there a long time. Nothing will change in percentages of sales from the ladies' some baked goods to the gentlemen serving things, selling pants and clothing. Nothing will change in the numbers based on what Jason is doing on Wednesday night. Total different vendors that would take responsibility for, we have over a thousand vendors and two hundred and fifty food trucks that are under contract with us to do events, they do other events as well, but they exclusively work with us, because they know the quality of the events that we put on. These are well-run, clean, family-friendly events, sometimes they don't work, and sometimes they do, and if they don't work, we go away. But we give it a fair shot, so positivity associated with this market should be positive, no negativity.
Let me add something to you.
Yes, sir.
Um, and they desire events for a day, so anything that you want to try to coordinate, you would be more, I would think, you'd be talking to her as, as, as part of, that she works for the city, so, and our events are known in advance, so you could actually benefit from that conversation as opposed to being answered, it's not that.
I'm not looking to be answered, I'm just, I'm here to present to the commission an opportunity.
I'm just giving you a, a point of advice. It's easy, I accept it, yes.
I accept, I accept a hundred percent. If I knew they were coordinating, I would have contacted the coordinator before, Roxanne's the only one. The only one who would be contacted, but.
Thank you.
If Saturday market's affected by our market, it will not give me the room to continue.
Thank you, thank you. So.
Wait, you have a question?
Where is it? Oh, then, I'm sorry.
We're going to stay here, we're going to stay.
I kind of like the idea, I do have concerns about the traffic and how that may be an impact, but I can also see that may add something to the kids, the Boys and Girls Club, um, an added fee while they're out there waiting for the kids to come work or whatever. I think, um, our bid coordinator is a contractor, and I personally, in my opinion, would work with our C A and our deputy city clerk. That way they'll get the footprint down, know exactly how to present it to the commission and a professional man, and if we gather the information, I think the nine weeks, um, probably is not asking us too much.
Uh, like I said, with the Boys and Girls Club, I'd love to offer a free cookie, a free ice cream to the kids that are out there, and we come with costs from the.
I like it.
Oh, but what I'm saying is, it is an opportunity, there's a small, little tiny cup, and there's a big cup, that's what, you know what I mean? There's things to share and have experiences from a company like ours coming in that works, that respects the city and wants to take care of the kids as well, so why not have our vendor make somebody out of the kids and go and pay for it?
Okay, that's a, that is a way of, we, we've got to make a decision after, you made your pitch and we appreciate it. So, oh, no, wait, we have to.
Joe, Joe, surprise.
Joe, Joey? Joey, you can sit down.
I just have a few suggestions.
Yes.
I'm, I'm not, yes, I know of it, to me, if you go to Walmart and go to Target and shop, I would, so there's a good chance of a war. The suggestion I do have is maybe put it to where the market park is now, where you can be, is, is totally away from the Boys and Girls Club. It's also away from the item on kids that are staying there after-school and running around the park and randomly don't pay attention to nothing. Um, and I think it also separates the traffic from going to the, um, Boys and Girls Club to pick up to his, his thing, it kind of separates, but also lets people on the walk over to his place, walk over and not intervene where he's dealing with the Boys and Girls Club. Kids just running through and stuff, causing havoc. The only other suggestion I have is, is that somebody keep going inside with item on, that if they keep, that they change one of their early days to maybe, um, full day because of any storm or any thing or reason that they miss a school day, sometimes they extend it.
Right.
That's just brought up, and you just work with them, maybe give us, I don't know, it's like forty-five minutes a day so they get it. Other than that, it's like, it's, it's crazy to park for that thirty, forty-five minutes, sometimes, yeah, yeah, they get out, once school's out, usually about thirty, forty-five minutes, maybe.
Wednesday's early, maybe still that.
Yeah, so two o'clock there, long before you, like, usually a heat shot at three, but it's, I'm telling you, they are all waiting on that park, they try to move it over the park.
At least two thirty.
But that's just my suggestion, is to keep one park.
All right. Further discussion? Do I have a motion? And do I have a vote? Um, zone one.
I have concerns about the safety, but I was going to make the same suggestion that Joey got about moving it to the front. I think that would help a lot, so, yes.
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 That's it? I'm going to vote no until I hear the results of the, uh, from the Boys and Girls Club. So three?
Yes.
So four?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
There you go.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Stop yelling.
Yes, I'm just.
Uh, Nathan? Nathan? Yeah, this is, everyone will score, I'm the only one. So, that is our, that's our C A, the city administrator, um, and plus Roxanne with all of that. All right, and goodbye. Okay, she's, she's got all that. Um, thanks for that. Where are we? Um, next to the worship, the city Lake Hall's night out worship, there you go. All right, me, you can sit through all of it. Please give me a name. Please give me a name.
Good afternoon and a great day, we're going to be going on Lakeview.
Would, would you, uh, I'm sorry, here. Do you wanna discuss this or what we have? You, uh, would we let us have a discussion because she makes the presentation, or would you like to make the presentation first?
I want to have a presentation first, or someone will discuss.
Very good. You have your floor.
We have presented an evening of worship plan, um, to the commission. Uh, and we have spoken on from our committee to do the Lake Helen community evening of worship because we want the entire city to be inclusive on this event. Um, our thing would be united in praise and the date, of course, is pending October eleventh, twenty twenty-five, beginning from five P.M. to seven thirty P.M., utilizing the Lake, our area, um, and the pavilion. Our purpose is create a sacred and engaging atmosphere for praise, prayer, and reflection, fostering unity across congregation ministries and community groups in which we have already kind of had our hand in, uh, speaking with and knowing that they are absolutely ready to be involved in such an event as this. Um, celebrate God's faithfulness through music. Uh, we will not have particular, uh, preaching or anything like that. It will be solely worship music, um, and encourage spiritual renewal and communal fellowship here in our city. Uh, we, I did get a coming soon flyer just tentatively so that you all would be able to kind of see what the publications would look like for an event like this. And that is all that I have for presentation at this time.
Just a quick, oh, just a quick question.
Sure.
What is the, what's the actual company name? Because I know you.
That would be, that would host the event.
Well, because I'm trying to find you on Sunday, if that shows.
Oh, okay, Small Business Development Program Incorporated is the actual organization that is going to be backing this event. The Vision Empowerment Ministries is out of the line, but that is our ministry development division. Okay.
On the application, we got October the eleventh, seven P.M. to nine P.M. Did you say something about five P.M. or seven thirty P.M.?
Um, well, we were looking from five P.M. to seven thirty P.M. on that day.
Okay, so that's in place of the seven to nine.
Right, right. Um, we, we decided that it would be better to have it as early as, or not early, early, but in order for it to be easy. Um, and not actually moving worship. Um, we were looking for it to be, um, we're, we're not going too much into the darkness with this event because then we have, we have to associate lighting and, and different things that we don't want to have to do. But obviously, the time is changing during that particular time, we will most definitely bring the light out.
If we approve this, you gonna, you gonna have flyers and stuff?
Yes, sir, we have flyers and I did want to ask permission for us to be able to put a sign at the corner of North Lakeview and Main Street or whatever corner you all would, uh, feel be necessary for this event. But just one sign is what we were going to, to get done for this event.
I believe that that's up south, east, southeast corner.
Southeast corner, okay.
I mean, that's safe property.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Now, you're, um, partnered with, uh, Saint Paul?
Uh, we are partnering with Saint Paul, um, as well. We are on our committee for decision making for this event.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, help, any identities before? How often do we do this?
Well, we do community events all the time.
So this is not a new.
This isn't new for us, not at all. Um, but we, they're normally inside.
Inside, yeah.
Inside, but, um, we actually host, um, annually, which this is the first year that we are currently doing it. And that's the Country of Bluegrass Music Festival. We are actually, uh, the coordinators for that event in Orange City, Florida. However, um, due to funding issues coming in, uh, with a lot of the different things going on in our wonderful government, um, we're not able to keep up with that to event any longer. Uh, but it has been success in the last few years.
We're in Karen, see that? Oh, that would be a good.
Sharon left. I heard that, I heard that, I heard that. Probably a lot better location than Orange City has.
Uh, on your, on your request, you got an in-kind request of a hundred and sixty dollars?
Um, and that's only due to what's been in the, in the application that looked like it may have been required in order for us to have a police officer if we needed it, but we do have internal security that we can bring in on that day. I don't think that there will be any issue, but we all will have a plan and have a security plan in place in which if you, actually, inside of our packet, we actually, maybe not on this one, but I do have a plan, uh, that includes a security plan for that day, um, a part of the plan, all of that. So, um, most definitely can, can rescind that if need.
So the in-kind one sixty was something that you saw that lead with Austin D. Quat?
Right.
And then you would be asked as to where that, if that is.
Right, yes, sir.
Okay.
But Mayor, I have a question on that, um, but they're asking for police and public works. If you give to them, then you have to be everywhere. We charge people for police and public works, so if, nothing against them, but we have to be consistent. So if you're going away and say the citizens of Lake Helen will pay for police and public works for this private event, then you need to do that for every event.
So how do you respond to that?
We. I respond to that as if we need to, to pay, then we will make a plan to do so.
Okay, so that's basically in kind of necessary, okay. All right. Any other discussion? Thank you very much for.
Thank you, your honor.
Making a decision on this?
Thank you.
Permission? Okay. Do I have to make a motion?
Select a statement. I'm, I'm going to some count.
Okay. The day, you have a wait, you have, uh, also a rain day.
Yes, we have, the event's date was October the eleventh, and if it rains, then October eighteenth was our rain day.
Rain day, yes.
Are you residents of the city?
Yes, we are.
I see you have a illustration page to show where you would be having it.
Yes, sir.
Using our bandstand.
Yes, sir.
That would be where you.
Yes, sir.
Maybe that would be, uh.
Cause we will have a live band that day, so that would be the location that.
That's where they would play, okay. And you have a lot of speakers.
Yes, sir, we have our, we, our S.C.P. community events will be, which is the Small Business Development Program, and will be issuing all of the equipment for that day.
Okay.
Including live.
Thank you. Have those cups moved on?
Ah, okay. For Christmas.
We set up for. Only game for Greg.
Okay.
I'm curious about the parking. Um, it's, it's says that it'll be at the Aquasrians Center and then walking over, but, um, we've held events in the park before in that space and, and we haven't needed to do that. So I'm wondering if, if that's necessary or.
That was only a contingency of we needed that parking area, that if we ran out of parking, that would, that was only a contingency and I apologize for not stating that in that section.
Yeah, could you get a parking in the peripheral areas?
Yes, and my, my thoughts on it is if, um, I'm not sure of the schedule of the West Beluche South Club on that date either, so I just wanna make sure there's not a conflict. I'm pretty sure if James uses that. I'm sure that we checked. Okay, okay, great.
Have, have you, have you seen where we use the market in the park?
Absolutely.
Therefore, parking there, you could also use that, okay.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion, do you?
I'll make a motion if we have something.
Do I have a second?
How's that?
Want to move a second? Any response from the community?
Everybody here.
Everybody.
All right, uh, Debbie said, uh.
Amen.
Zone one.
Yes.
Zone two.
Yes.
Zone three.
Yes.
Zone four.
Yes.
And I say.
Oh, thank you.
Amen. Thank you. I spoke to, I tried to call pastors today, too.
Oh.
You go get my email. Uh, moving around our. To the Resolution twenty twenty-five fifteen, appointing a zone two commissioner.
Twenty twenty-five dash thirteen.
Okay.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirteen by. The resolution does seem like Allen Board established in the appointed process because of vacancy created due to the reservation of Commissioner Hunter, setting a candidate qualifying, setting the date of the city commission meeting for the appointment of a candidate who shall serve the balance and end of term with Commissioner Hunter.
I have. What is it on September? September, September, you know.
Yeah, what it basically provides helps you is that the qualifying will be from September twenty-second, Monday, at noon until, um, September twenty-sixth, that probably at noon. And then on October ninth, twenty twenty-five, our regularly scheduled meeting, the commission will make a selection for someone who will then take office at the organizational meeting in November, November.
Why don't I have one of those?
So noon on, so Monday, noon on Monday, September twenty-second, till noon on Friday, September twenty-sixth.
It's two pieces.
Okay.
And this is what we brought back per the direction of the commission. Um, the commission's only legal requirement on the city charter is to make sure that vacancy created by Roger's resignation is still within thirty days of Roger's resignation. The fact of that is resignation, which will be thirty days on the number of appointments. So, this is proposed to put somebody, select somebody who will be ready to fill that vacancy, one in person or.
Good afternoon.
We have time to, um, like, um, we're going through this process and you tell me, have your campaign involved as well? Applications and meetings with any applicants?
Well, there's a, there's an application, I told you there. They would go through the center process, they would submit an application, I think the seat requires fifteen signatures.
Yes.
Registered voters. And the only difference would be there won't be a campaign fee, there's no feeling of state for an election. So there wouldn't be a fee involved for somebody with that modern campaign account, but they would submit as if they were.
Oh, but we have to do petitions as well.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we will need a commission.
Yes.
And, uh, with those.
Well, the, no, petitions will be done by the election office, they'll verify that they're registered voters and they'll just confirm, get your name, just as we've done on that, so we're not involved in, they'll do that for us. It probably costs us ten dollars, so it's a nominal extent, what is it, ten cents, uh? Yeah, ten cents, so, so if they have, we only do fifteen, it's ten cents to verify. So depending on how many candidates you drop, I mean, it's not gonna be much, so, but, so, yeah, that's a process that's in and then once those are in, you know, that information in reference to, hey, these three, four people qualified and then you will get that information and have the meeting on October ninth.
Yeah, it'll be a legit, I don't know.
So would we be in violation of sunshine off, we try to contact things, I think it's prior to, or?
No, you're not gonna violate the sunshine, well, as long as y'all don't agree on how you're gonna go on things, if you were, like, I mean, that, that would be, because they're not, they're not that, uh, yeah. They're, they're basically candidates, the social model doesn't apply to candidates, but I would just caution not to, well, you know, I really support this issue, I support you if you would agree to do this, don't do that.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have that paper, do you? Do you have another?
I need you.
Thank you, okay. So, you have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we don't.
Second?
Twenty-five thirteen.
Twenty-five thirteen? Is it a second? Tick tock, tick tock.
I'm gonna make a second, I'm really confused, but, well, not confused, I'm just not happy with the way it's going down, I think that this was sort of a slick move. I've got to spit my mind on it, however, it's here, the people want it, so I'm gonna make a second on it. It seems like we changed the color of the horse whenever it's pouring outside.
Anyone else?
This was actually directed by the commission.
I know.
Um, okay. When you say we changed, you mean y'all changed the color of it?
Uh, yeah, we, yeah, I don't count anybody.
Okay, good, didn't know you were longer than the week.
No, I'm not getting you to the week, so.
Just, just for clarification, it was not a slick move. It was a decision that was brought up because we have three commissioners that are gonna be up for reelection. We have a city administrator who has resigned. And so rather than to wait until we have four people on the dice, that we would use this opportunity for five people to make that decision. And that is a better situation than being on the other side where I've been on it a couple of times, where we wound up having a two-to-two split and it was gonna draw itself out. So this gives us an opportunity not to put anything against Roger. Roger will have the opportunity to, if he becomes mayor, to be able to select his person that's gonna sit in his.
No, it'll be the commissioner.
Well, you would be a point of that commission, you would have, you would have a vote, let's put it that way, you would have a vote. Um, so now, um, most to move second? Zone one? Uh, discussion, comments? Thank you.
Yes, I got a big one. In the twenty nineteen elections, Zone Two Commissioner Vernon Burton decided to run for mayor against Stacey Grayson. To qualify, he had to submit an irrevocable, irrevocable letter of recognition, which was the same thing I did to run against her. This created a vacancy in the commission at the November meeting. As the Lake Helen Charter gives the commission thirty days to fill a vacancy, they decided to publish a resolution to announce the vacancy in October twenty nineteen. The resolution outlines a position that would be vacant, the qualifying requirements, the qualifying period and the date of the meeting when the position would be filled for one of the qualifying candidates, using word for word from the chart. The timeline gave applicants about six weeks to meet the qualifying requirements. This resolution has the effect of changing our charter without the resident's input or vote. Our attorney stated that it is only a one-time decision. Why is it only one time? Once a decision is passed, it is difficult to return to previous policy. Once a decision is passed, it is difficult to return to previous policies. Wayne Bishop has tried to have the charter changed a few times and it was voted down by our residents.
It never went to vote.
It did a couple of times on referendum and it was shot down by the citizens.
That's the one that they went to tell Hassian, pass behind every.
That was done before the other two votes took place. Now, if I may finish.
Go ahead.
Zone four commissioner is for the change, it sneaks in the back door, change without the voters. The zone three commissioner at the last meeting stated she believes that that's the way it should be already. I don't know if she took in consideration of the past practices of the city. The mayor has stated that it is needed because we will be bringing in a new administrator and that it will maintain continuity. This has no effect on or from our current or future administrator, and there may only be one meeting with only four representatives, as has happened in the past, with no loss of continuity. Resolution twenty-five thirteen even states as section ten E two of the city charter, that if, and if for any reason other than a recall, a vacancy occurs in the office of the mayor or city commission seat within the last year of the term, that office shall be filled for the remainder of the term appointed within thirty days following the occurrence of such vacancy by a majority vote of the remaining city commissioners. So you don't have to haul them there to appoint the new one. As elected officials, we are given powers that can change communities. To usurp these powers to change, to make changes without the residents' input is misguided. As an example, we have authority to require the administrator to negotiate purchase of property to help resolve flooding issues. Instead, we follow his guidance and wait for an evaluation by our engineer to see if the property has any restrictions. This is holding our power back for more information. We don't have to wait, but we do. Our charter gives all the steps for filling vacancies in an organized manner. What is the rich, what is the rush? Is this really ego desire for our mayor?
Finish?
Finish.
Okay.
Let me say something.
Yes, please do.
Thank you, because when it's up here, it's out of come out. Okay, first of all, we are not changing the charter, and we pass resolutions at these meetings every month that goes against what's in the charter. It's just something that happens, so we're not going against the charter or what the citizens have in there. The reason that this makes sense is because you have five people voting. These meetings go on forever as it is, so you're going to get up there and you're going to have a two-two tie all night long. Then what happens? We sit here all night long, and the other reason this makes sense is because I'm, let me calm down. This makes sense because this country is so full of, I'm going to make this decision over here because it's not going to affect me anyways because I'm still going to get what I want. Decisions have consequences, I'm sorry, they just do, and they should for everybody. I don't appreciate you calling me or my husband, who you spoke to like something on the bottom of your shoe the night you tried to oppose that new charter. You were the one that was against that new charter. I'm going, because that reminds us, I'm going with.
Thank you. Um, just for clarification, uh, just for clarification, I ran for mayor three times and lost three times. Um, the first time, I ran against, uh, Brother Stone, and the commission, the commission voted me back into my own seat. The second time, I ran against Daisy Russell, the commission voted me back in to my seat. The third time, I ran against Karen Lane, and I lost, and I did not want to be reinstated. There was a charter review, and then the charter review came up with a, a novel, um, they called it the Burton Rule. The only time that a resignation would have to take place if you were in zone four or zone two and you run it, you wanted to run for mayor. So although the Burton Rule was with my name on it, the intentions of the Burton Rule, it did not pass. The intentions of the Burton Rule was that if you resigned from your seat as city commissioner, if you resigned, then if you lost the mayor's race, you would not be considered to be reinstated. That did not pass. Uh, I was in favor of that because I did not plan to run again, but it was the city commission that voted in both times. Um, the last time that was, the vote was the two to two tie, commissioners that were on the dais was Chris Bassel, Jim Pomm, Kelly Fresca, and the mayor was Daisy Russell. That vote came down to Jim Bassel, one would motion me, one would second, they did give a third vote. When, and there were three people on that, there were three people that they were choosing from. Uh, Roger was on that, um, in that, in that number, is that, if I'm not mistaken, Roger might clarify to me, when there were three things on that commission, it was Cookie, it was Olivia Cherry, and yourself.
And you.
Well, three other people besides me. Um, Cookie withdrew, you withdrew, because you said, I think about continuity, either.
Well, you think you'll send a shout, a term.
Well, I think the way that you presented is that, um, you believe in the continuity because of either your military service or your fire service, that continuity was what you felt wasn't necessary, so that's why you withdrew. And as it turned out, that motion to appoint me was second by either Jim or Chris Bassel, and then the vote came to Kelly Fresca, Kelly Fresca said no, then the mayor changed her vote, and it became yes. The reason that it was an issue, could have been an issue, is because with the two to two deadline, then it would require us to have, it would have been within the deadline of thirty days, but it would require us to have a separate meeting to make that decision, and so the motion was then whoever or whatever Daisy Russell changed her mind would eliminate if that happened to happen. So this, this by, I take offense to the fact that it was my decision or my, um, bringing it up, this was not a slick move. This was just in the best interest of the city, and as Roger was saying, that it changed the charter, nothing in the charter changed. We have the city commission, we have the ability to make and change decisions as we go. Each decision, each commission has the ability to change with the, with the circumstances, and sometimes the circumstances required to make some changes. We should be flexible enough to do that because we don't make decisions just willy-nilly. So I'm just responding to my commi, my fellow commissioner and both of them, um, this is not a slick move. The slickest move, I guess you can say, is that we would have all five people making the decision, who is going to take that seat, and choose you win, Roger, I would think that you would benefit by the second person in zone two. So that is not what changes, who wins, who wins does not, I'm not finished, whoever wins does not change the circumstances. It should not be based on that, and that was something that was made in, with my own experience, I'm only bringing to the table what I've experienced, um, so that's what I got to say about that.
I want to say.
Mine?
Hold on, no disrespect, Vern, but you, you ain't that slick.
Thank you.
My bringing this up has nothing to do whether I win or lose, it has to do with my beliefs in the charter, the way the charter is presented, yes, it has its problems, yes, it needs to be adjusted. Um, there has been attempts to adjust it in the past, and every time it comes up with the same presentation that was turned down by the citizens in the past. Nothing changed the way it was being done, and that's why I was against the way that Wayne was presenting it. The, the decision that I'm going is based on the past practices, the way it was done in the past, and yes, there was a lot of typos that took place in two thousand nineteen for Vernon to get in there. But that's not, I don't believe that'll be the case every single time, just because it happened once, doesn't mean it's going to happen every single time. So whether I win or lose, I just want to make sure that we're abiding by the city charter and abiding by prac, past practices of what the city commission has done in the past, and not creating something new because of something that happened in the past.
Thank you. Past, passes is, the past is how we make decisions for the future, and it was, it was a, a charter that had a number of things that people did not like. People did not like a four-year term, people did not like that there was no term limit. Wasn't just the fact that there was going to be the Burton Rule, there are a number of things that the charter did not make, um, a lot of people happy. So as we sit up here, we know we are not going to make decisions all the time, it's going to keep all people happy, so we do the best that we can. And so that was my decision, um, to bring this up, again, no disrespect to you, the fact that as a city commissioner, I think you made a decision that I would stand behind and I would appreciate if you would understand that this is not something that was, and I'm sure you, I know you understand that, but some people might believe that it was something that could have been turned or directed toward you. And I can tell you this right now, it was nothing in that, in that regard, so that's all I can say.
If I could respond to the remarks, so I started with a simple move. I understand that the reason we're doing this is for continuity, for the best of the city, that we're losing our CA, we may still be here, turn at times, who knows? Commissioner Rutledge, she's had several years on the commission, so I think that she's pretty knowledgeable. Either you or Roger will be on the seat, both of you have years of experience. Commissioner Bishop has experience, she's got years, this is her second job. I may or may not be, Philip, I'm the only one out, you still have a panel of people who have the knowledge and who can continue on. And that's why I felt that at this time, changing this resolution just didn't, it didn't sit right with me, it still doesn't sit right with me. Um, I'm going to go ahead and go with it, hopefully in the future, that we can get this kind of thing straightened out, so the citizens don't have to carry this kind of thing, you know, that if, if one person's out or three people's out, the city's, you know, got a couple of complaints I have, we still have a city adjourned. I just believe that, and I've heard it said over and over since I've been on this dais, historically, we've done it this way, it's always been done this way. I think the major problem with the people sitting on this dais is that it's historically done this way, and it seems to fit whatever pitch we're trying to get into. We need to look at the charter, it needs to be done professionally, it needs to stand, the charter is something that we have by-bye or supposed to, but I can tell you four times in the last few, or at least two times, that, um, it's been violated. So I, I don't even know why we even bring up the charter. Do I believe the charter's being violated now? I do not believe that whatsoever. Our legal advisor and I discussed it because before I made any decisions, I called him, find out, are we in violation of the charter? And he, you know, it worked, when I had read, I was excited with what he said, so I don't believe that we're in violation of the charter. What I believe we're doing is just writing a resolution for a particular day, and then in two years or next year, you're always going to be in.
Good, thank you. Um, you spoke about historically, um, historically, historically, I don't remember, I don't recall when there was a primary that was won in the race would run in the primary. Which meant that we had to make a decision or we had to come to a conclusion, well, if the primaries in August, and there were only two people in the race, and one vote, thanks sixty percent of the vote, so now what did we do with the charter? It says that the next meeting after the election, that the commissioner or the, uh, whoever won the seat would then take the seat. The fact that it was an August primary, and we actually had to find out from two brothers election, and I think, who would take the seat? Would it be in the next September meeting, or would we have to wait for the November meeting? It turns out, if I'm not mistaken, clarified, is that the, the issue came up that East City Commission was sit, was given some year or two years, or whatever the years was, in three months, August, September, October, and November. Having a primary in three months and then having the seat of the, of the mayor replaced three months in advance, they said they wasn't going to do it. So historically, it hadn't been done before. Historically, the only time that this situation takes effect, if it's zone four or zone two, are moving to try to become the mayor, and they would then have to decide. Zone three and zone one, it never comes up, and I don't think it's ever been brought up before, so there's no historical foundation that we can look forward, look backwards to. So this is, this is where we are right now, we are making our decisions based on what the circumstances are in the moment, and it's not changing the charter, it's not changing anything other than what we are as a commission allowed to do, to make decisions that affect and to the benefit of our citizens. And sorry that I'm in a position to make this, because that was the one reason I did not decide to take the last time that I lost. I was not in the frame of mind to want to even go into zone two because I was dealing with my daughter who just passed. So if I was able to make that decision, then I could have, Roger could make it now, I mean, or should say, I'm sure, wasn't, wasn't that it was, I could have chalked it up another, another win, and I could take it to the boat, to the bank, it was not. So, on that note, I think we have a motion.
Do you have a card?
A card?
Kelly Prescott.
Kelly Prescott.
Yes, Kelly Prescott, six one six John Street. As a former commissioner, I was on that two-to-two vote. Will you be coming back into your seat? Um, that wasn't an easy decision to make. But this is why, and I must explain now why. Because we have a job to follow our charter. And as it's been in the past, and those rules have been, is that when a person who wants, you can run in Zone Two and Zone Three. Those are the only two zones that have, that have to resign to run. Zone One, the mayor, obviously, doesn't need to resign to run for mayor. And Zone Four, their two, their two years are up and they have the opportunity to run.
One mayor, three. Two and four.
Two and four, not one and three.
Not two and three, two and four, the one's a...
Two and four, the old ones are...
That one's a separate.
Two, that's what I said, two and, two and four.
Right, because it's an even-year election, so you have to have an even-year seat.
Charlie, is your seat up right now?
I just, it just was last, I mean, it just...
Last year.
Last year, yeah.
She didn't run for mayor.
So your seat, you came up, so it's Zone One.
She ran on opposed.
Mm-hmm. So it's Zone Two.
He didn't have to run.
I'm running for mayor, so he gave it to me.
Let me go back on that.
It's her.
Yeah, okay, let me go back on that. Uh, my, my main point was, is that the decision that not everybody has the opportunity to resign and run, to run, resign to run in order to get their seat. You following me?
It's not a, it's not an obligation...
The resignation not only applies to commissioners, it would apply if they decided to run for Kelly, it would apply to different...
Well, I'm discussing about commission at this point.
Obviously, if the commissioner, you know, decided to run for a different office, the resignation also applies.
Okay. It also, it also applied...
Is that obligation to resign?
It also applied for... It also applied towards the governor who had to resign to run and then he changed the votes.
Exactly.
Okay, so those rules don't apply to everybody because not everybody's seat is up at the same time, is what my point is.
If you're running for mayor.
If you're running for mayor.
Right.
Otherwise, you're just running for the seat.
Well, the governor only changed it for himself.
Yeah, exactly. So what, what my point is, is it doesn't apply to everybody sitting up here right now if they want to run for mayor.
But if we wanted to run for mayor, we would have had to resign, so it would have applied to everybody.
Okay, so if you wanted to run for mayor...
Two and four.
You had your two years up, then you would run, run the right seat.
You would have to resign if you wanted to run for mayor.
I would have had to resign. Yeah, because my time's not...
Oh, no, you're not, I'm confused.
But there's no difference between the other commissioners, they have stagger terms. Any commissioner that has stagger terms, Kelly, it's the same thing.
Well, that's exactly the point.
It's the same, every, every city.
Well, we resign, we resign to run.
You resign to run.
You resign to run. And there is no guarantee of getting your seat back.
No.
So in that term, you are giving up your seat to run for the mayor's seat. You understand where I'm at? Am I, am I following correctly? Okay.
You can't have a overlapping term.
You can't, no.
So that, that's why it only applies to two because the other two commissioners have coincided terms with the mayor.
If they're gonna run in there all the year, then they, they would not have to resign because their term is already gonna be up at the end of the year. If that was the case, they wanted to run for mayor, all they want to do, all they would have to do is put the application for, for mayor. They would not have to resign because their term is ended.
The only difference that's occurring is that they're choosing the person that's going to replace the vacancy prior to the vacancy occurring. So it can be filled on the night the vacancy occurs.
So, so where I was, was two and four have to resign to run in order to run for mayor. That's where, that's where I was at. And with those two seats, those are the only two seats that apply to having to resign to run for mayor. Anybody else has to fill out their term. So in the past, Vernon, you have resigned to run, I think it was three times, correct?
Two.
Two?
No, no, three times I had to resign to run and two times I was appointed, reappointed. The third time, I didn't want to be reappointed.
You weren't, you weren't a commissioner at that point.
I was a vice mayor. I was a vice mayor.
Two thousand nineteen, you were, you were a vice mayor.
And when I decided to run and I, I resigned, and when I was reappointed to the seat, because I was a vice mayor, I had to be passed over for vice mayor to the next, at that time, it was, it was, um...
Mike Woods.
Mike Woods. When it came to him, he declined it.
Yes.
And so then that way, it came back to me. So he declined it so that I could be the...
That was in twenty eighteen?
No, it was an odd year, it has to be...
So it was two thousand seventeen?
It's seventeen, yes.
Now that all that's gotten confused.
It's confusing immediately.
My, my point was is that I don't think that decision should be up to the commission as a whole. That decision to change the charter should be put onto ballot. It just needs to be, to have the charter changed, it just needs to be worded in the proper way. It has failed in the past because of the ways that it has been written. There are, there are problems with our charter. There are, you know, there are issues with our charter. But that's a job, that, that's a decision for our people, our residents, to make.
We're not voting to change the charter, we're only voting to do a resolution, which we do all the time.
I was, I was, I was elected to run for two years. It was my decision to resign in only one year. I did not have to do that. But according to the law, I can't run for a seat without having resigned in front. So there is no resignation. And the resignation was whether I, it, it was whether I would lose.
But it's, you have to sign and resign to run. Anyway, my, my point is that that's a decision that I don't think that's...
I'm trying to give her three minutes, you want to nine minutes?
Thank you, thank you.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to move along.
Come back, you, you have nine minutes.
My, my point, my point was is the decision should be, when they change things like that, should be for the people. And the four of you, at the end, who's left? That's where that decision comes in.
Thank you.
Whether it's hard for two and two or not.
Thank you.
What, what they've done in the past practice is that they've always waited, they allowed the people to do all the paperwork and everything prior to, awaited for the appointment until that thirty-day period after the date of resignation. To allow a person that if he did not win the position, he'd be allowed to request to be reappointed. What this resolution does this year, it removes that. I will not be allowed to be, to request to be reappointed if I lose the election.
So in the past, I smoked three packs of cigarettes a day, but I gave it up because I learned from the past and then I became facts.
I used to smoke cigarettes, cigars and pipes.
So what, we're gonna just cherry pick what resolutions we pass and don't pass? I will never vote to be...
Not all resolutions have the effect of changing the charter.
I will never vote to...
I'm at a point now that we have a, the motion and a second, and I'm calling for the vote. We've had discussion from the public, um...
Just so we can back it up, say that this vote doesn't pass, then most likely this resolution will come back in October, in October. And for you to fill in new blanks in the November timeframe, so it'll be reconsidered in October, um, if it, if this doesn't pass. You're gonna have to pass this resolution at some point, obviously, because you, you have to fill that vacancy, um, within thirty days. So if, if it doesn't pass, we'll bring it back in October and we will have different qualifying times and a different date of the meeting for the person to take off. It'll probably be a special call meeting in October.
So that being said, Zone One?
No.
Zone Two?
No.
Zone Three?
No.
Zone... Sir? Yes? Zone Four?
Yes.
I never voted yes. So... Is that registered? Yep? Is that registered? Can we take a break? Yes, you could. Thank you.